Good morning. Today is Wednesday, August the 4th, 2021. Notice is hereby given of regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas, being held on this day at this time, August the 4th, 9:00 a.m. We're located at the Grimes County NX-114, West Buffington Avenue. The meeting is called to order. If you would please rise for the invitation. Matt, are you going to? Matt Vaughn will deliver the invocation. Remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag, please, Matt.
I'll miss y'all, you know? Shining group of people.
All you have to do is show up.
Let's pray, not play. Oh gracious God, we just give you thanks. We give you thanks for this wonderful county that we all reside in. We thank you for the leadership that continues to bring forth vision and have grace and will listen and respond to our individual needs. We thank you, God, for the skill sets that you've installed in each one of them as they carry on the business of the county. God, give us grace, encourage our spirits, lift our spirits, God, to know that you're bigger than anything that might be going on now. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Would you please be seated. I do not have any public comment sheet submitted to me before prior to the meeting, but I will ask Commissioners, do you have anything that you want to share? Commissioner Dobianski?
St. Mary's Catholic Church is having a blood drive Sunday from 8:00 until 1:00. We will be serving men's club. We'll be serving breakfast there for that. Tomorrow is Food Bank Day here in Anderson over at the Baptist Church. They will be distributing food from the Food Bank tomorrow.
Do you know what time that starts?
8:00 to 12:00, I believe.
8:00 to noon? Thank you.
Judge, I'd like to give a special thanks.
I bet you would. Go ahead.
A special thanks to the citizens of Grimes County, this Commissioners Court, all of our generous donors and sponsors for the back-to-school backpack giveaway. I want to give a special thanks to Mr. David Lilly for having the vaccination clinic also running at the same time. We appreciate all the efforts you did to get that going. We just want to thank you all for a total of over 600 backpacks that were distributed and we didn't run out of any and the families greatly appreciated it. So I just want to tell everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, number six. And I do want to, before we vote on those, if you each will turn to budget item number three of the budget amendments. That's on the second page. If you'll go to the very first line where it says 0010-0375, if you would change that to 0020-375, that was a typographical error, but I wanted that corrected before you had the opportunity to vote on that. Saying that, if there are any comments or questions regarding any of those consent agenda items, number three, consider and take action to approve the Treasurers List of Claims and Bills, number four, consider and take action to approve payroll, agenda item number five, approve one third of the submitted by county treasurer for June 2021 unauthorized advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with local government code 114.026, which is page four of the agenda. Agenda item number six, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers.
If there are no further questions, then I make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
Second motion.
There is a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three, four, five, and six by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion on any of those? Hearing on all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. That motion carries. Commissioners, I'm going to take the liberty because we have a conflict in schedules of bringing agenda item number 10 up. And agenda item number 10 is Grimes County Emergency Management Services Coordinator David Lilly considering to approve the memorandum of understanding between Grimes County and Brazos County for emergency alerting to the public granting Brazos County 911 permission to send child abduction emergency, CAE, messages and Amber alerts through Grimes County Emergency Alert System and authorized the county judge's signatory, our attachment number 10. Mr. Lilly has a conflict. He needs to be up at the cog by 10:00 this morning for a rack meeting. And that's not a slang word for taking a nap. So, Mr. Lilly?
Yes, sir. Judge, Commissioners, I beg you, explaining, Judge, this MOU is really more of an administrative requirement on behalf of Brazos County, but each one of the other counties that are listed, Burleson, Grimes, Leon, Madison, Robertson, and Washington Counties, they, we need to have MOUs with Brazos County before they can legally send child abduction alerts through the, their, whatever reverse 911 system we use. So this is, there's no money involved in this. There's no agreement for additional services. It's only pertaining to child abduction alert or CAE messages.
Although it's a shame we have to have something like this, I understand the necessity.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lilly, on number seven, it said it's going to be reviewed and re-accepted each year in January, but we need to change that now to August?
I believe normally, this was kind of a short notice thing. Michelle Meehan is my counterpart in Brazos County, and I think it may have been something they weren't even aware that they had to have in place to be able to do these alerts. So I believe that's going to be in force from now on, but it will be in January. So yeah, we would probably have to redo this again come January.
But this will cover us and the other counties for the meantime.
Between now and next January.
I thought it says in, under the scope of work, that it says it will continue until revoked by the county in the district.
Well, that could, you know, if you, for whatever reason, we decide to revoke it, like any other MOU before this one ran out, then that gives you the power to do that. I can't foresee there would ever be a reason for that. I think that's just legalese that has to go into MOUs to allow that clause in case there's any reason that the county feels it's necessary to revoke a MOU for whatever purpose. I will be seeing Michelle today at this meeting, and I can certainly ask her for clarification on that annual rule requirement as to why that is, but like I said, it is, that's, I believe this is, this is plain catch-up to what Charlie had in place for the Brazos County.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, that's his opinion personally, but I want to make sure we got it so we don't lose it.
Right. Yeah. I don't know what would have happened. I don't think it would have actually been a problem. I can't foresee we had a child alert sent out before we had this MOU in place in Brazos County, but this is, and just to cover them legally for any issues that could arise.
I move to approve the MOU between Grimes County and Brazos County for emergency alerting to the public.
Second motion.
There is a motion before the court on agenda item number 10 by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Attorney, and authorized the county judge to see.
Yes.
Okay.
Make sure that's.
Is there, and is there further discussion? Hearing none of them, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. None? Thank you. Mr. Lilly, you're free to go. Thank you.
I made a hard copy of it, so you will have to sign it, and then I'll get it from you and get back. That's, that's the actual MOU.
All right.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Drive safe. We'll get back to agenda order. We will now go to agenda item number seven, Grimes County Building, Maintenance Manager, Mr. Al Peeler, update on the ongoing projects, Grimes County Jail and Grimes County Justice Center.
Morning, Fishers. Good morning.
Good morning.
So we'll start off with the jail. It's been a long two weeks at the jail. I never thought we'd have this much humidity in the month of July. We had some, like I reported last time on the jail, we had some issues with older units not being able to keep up, stuff like that. We had high humidity.
You're talking about air conditioning units?
HVAC units, yes. And so what we found is some of the units weren't even wired correctly. They just forgot about immersed, wiring in emergency heat, and that's what we use for humidity control. So we spent five days, me and my team and EnviroTech and Climate Tech, and we're holding, I just looked at it, we're holding at 58% to 61%. That's, that's all I'm going to be able to get out of a, a commercial rooftop unit as at 20 years old. So we're pretty happy with that. It's better than 80% to 90% that we've been running.
Let me stop your county attorneys here, and he shared with me some of his frustration. Are you noticing a little bit of improvement, sir?
Oh, yeah. You could come into my office and any piece of paper that you picked up was somewhat damp. It's not that way anymore.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, thanks for that, John. So I'm happy with the way the systems are running. We're going to, this is a continued battle. We got to get some training scheduled for our, our employees, which that will be either one day in Houston or we're trying to get them to come in-house, so.
And the employees, you're talking about your maintenance employees?
The maintenance department, yes. We got mold remediation starting later next week just to knock it finally out, try to drench it and get it all out. Now, I'm saying that, I don't know what COVID's doing right now. For the last couple, year, I've chased ghosts, so that could change. So again, we don't know what they're doing right now. The jail is in some lockdown, but where we got to go, we, I think I can get, get it mostly completed. So that's the jail report. Is there any questions? Okay. Move right along. Justice Center. Wow. Looks good. It's coming along great. We just got our, the coil that we had to, we got it wrong, they shipped it to the wrong person, then they shipped the wrong coil, and then it's finally here, so we can finish up our HVAC on that side. Supply chain backwards right now are killing us. I mean, we've never seen this in the construction industry before. I haven't in my lifetime anyhow, where a door hinge, they'll send, they'll send you 12 door hinges and you need 40. And then they'll tell you, well, the rest of the door hinges are backward for six weeks. I haven't seen this ever. I mean, I've seen it once in a while, but not, not on a major project. So we're having some supply chain issues right now, and that's just because of COVID. There is a couple of questions that we're going to have in this that we need discussion on. Our furniture cost as of today, which I'm signing off this afternoon when all final quotes are coming in, $134,782.63. Now, saying that, that is what we have up to date. If KI has a clause that says it can go up, so if it goes up from now to when I get to sign it, to get the final bids, it might be a little higher than that, or it could be a little less than that, because KI said they were going to eat some of that. So, but that's the number as of right now today.
It's far less than the 400,000 or the 300,000 that was being broadcast.
Any questions on that? Commissioner Walker, she's been in the thick of things with this, and I think we finally got it.
Got real confusing, didn't it?
It got real confusing real quick, so.
Commissioner, are you relatively comfortable with the number that?
I'm comfortable, some things we took out that were specialty items, like gun safes. Those things will still need to be ordered. So is that correct?
Well, if we took one gun safe out.
One?
Yeah.
Okay. I know there was a question yesterday about the judge's gun safe.
Yeah. And we, well, we took one gun safe out. The judge took the, the cheaper of the, the district judge took the cheaper of the long gun safes. He also took the desk safe out. He wants a different security measure. Let's put it that way.
But other than that, it's been good. Jennifer and Al have persevered, and it was a lot of emails back and forth to the point it would just get confusing. So anyway, thank you all.
Thank Jen. Jen is, I couldn't have did it without you.
Amen.
Any other questions on the furniture? So we're getting ready with that being.
I do.
Okay.
If you're having backorders on construction equipment, are we going to be having backorders on office equipment?
We'll find out today.
Okay.
I hope not. So that brings us to where I want to talk a little bit about moving process. And it doesn't have to be a thorough, I just want to hear some of your thoughts before I move into this on a few things. So there are, there are, on byboard, there are moving companies, but they're like from San Antonio, Houston, Dallas. I don't have to go out for bid on them, they've already bid through the state. The problem that I fear, and this is just without, I'm just planting the seed to tell me how to go with it. We're going to be moving over a month period. All right? That's two days. We pack, they move, so it doesn't kill IT and maintenance. If something's not working, we can get right in and get that office up and running. My thoughts on that is the cost alone, if, if you're a moving company from San Antonio, and we're going to do a month of moving, you're going to charge me that month. If I put it out for bid, the bid process, to try to get some of our local people to bid on it, College Station, Navasota, Huntsville, somebody that's closer in the area that has a moving company, I believe the cost of just the length of the move would be cheaper than going out to a national San Antonio. I'll do whatever you want me to do. I just think we should put it out for bid process, because that's a two-week timeframe. I, I can write the narrative up, send it to John C., make sure that's the narrative that should be in a paper. And I can hold a one-day, if you're bidding on this, this is the day that you need to be here, so I can show you everything we're moving and our schedule. I don't have to do that. I can go to the byboard and we can, and we can do just like we did the furniture, but I think, I think we should put it out for bid. That's what my preference is. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with that. Are the byboard prices based on moving in San Antonio and Houston as opposed to, I mean, where, how far does that cover?
100 miles.
So we're way outside of that?
Yeah.
So they could.
Well, and that's what scares me, because, yeah, they have a set price for boxing this up, but then they go, well.
Plus expenses.
It, plus expenses, and that's not a, that's not a price that's governed, governed in anything that I can see as of yet.
I'm going to agree with going up the bid. I don't think we lose in that process.
Yeah. I mean, I can go off the byboard and get one, and compare it after our bids. If, if they beat the bid, then okay, it's no harm, no foul, but I think we need to go to the bid process on this. This, this where the bid process, in my opinion, benefits.
I think that's what we ran into a little bit with the furniture. If we've gone out for bid, we may have, you know, we could go to whoever locally that we could have wanted to out of the bid process. So I would say there are companies that you're probably going to pay a trip charge, mileage charge, and, and coming from San Antonio, I know if I had to come every day, you'd pay for it.
Yeah, 30 days.
So, yeah, I, I would think that you would need to go out for bid if you had the time.
We have the time. Okay. The other thing I wanted to discuss, so I've, I've just made a tour around some of our offices, and there's a lot of personal items. I need to know before we get started in this, is the county, should we not put a mandate out? Should we, should we just move it? Are we going to move personal items or just county items?
What is, what are some of the personal items that you've run across that cause your concern?
I've seen bases that come from home. I've seen pictures, trinkets. If, if every department has one to two boxes per employee of personal items, that's 200 boxes. So I would, I would say that if it's a personal item, you pack them, you take them at a later date when we get moved over. That's my opinion. I know that's not going to be a popular opinion.
But I don't think, I don't think the county wants to assume the liability of that's grandma's vase that got broke, or you broke the glass on my grandbaby's picture or my kid's picture. I think if we, as a county, provided each employee eight box, you know, that they could move their items with, then we ought to leave it up to the employees.
You're a lot nicer than I am.
You would give them a box, would you?
No, because the county didn't move it in, so why are we moving it out?
I think you move it.
No, I'm not talking about us moving it out. I'm talking about giving them a box that they can take over to their new location.
I can get boxes from the second-hand stuff.
I don't think you want to use county funds. I mean, you're going to have to purchase those boxes and.
No, but we have boxes that we can recycle. My thought was we could recycle them fairly quick from the first that moved to the second to the third to the fourth, because those, that's not a point, point of argument. But to your question, I think the employees ought to move their personal effects.
Okay. I agree. I mean, it's an expense. Where are they going to, you're, you're paying when you move, through their volume and weight. You've got two, 200 boxes. I mean, there's a lot of personal items.
Right.
That will impact the moving prices.
Absolutely.
And it might be a good time to take some of your personal items that you've accumulated over the last year, 10 years, 20 years.
He left that part off.
Sorry?
He said, it's time to take them. He said, home.
That's what I meant.
So that's, that's really the things that I'm moving forward with.
Well, in conjunction with the move, though, I've asked my office, and I know Cherie's been diligent, but didn't we send out an email, or did I just want to send out an email for people to start going through files and records of things and determine? We haven't done that just in our office?
Hopefully, department heads already know that they need to do that.
Well, they, but if we haven't, if we haven't officially notified people, I think the court probably, we need to send a memo or an email out to all employees with the understanding that some records are eternal, if you will, and some have a seven-year and a three-year, and we want, but those items that can be disposed of, we ought to be doing that now instead of waiting until moving day and go, oh, I don't need that. We have the accumulation of all these documents or papers that we don't need.
Well, we can sit down and get with email sent out.
So as project manager, would you get with Cherie on that? And then Cherie, if you'll make the distribution to EOs and department heads, we can start that, because now's not too soon to start that. And then if they have any questions on record retention, they can certainly go to our county attorney with that question, or our county clerk, our county clerk. But I'm sure the government code clearly specifies everything we need to keep and everything we can get rid of.
Each office is supposed to have a retention scheduled.
Right.
Yeah. So get with Jesse.
Oh, get with Jesse. All right. Our county attorney has passed that buck. You'll contact Jesse Murphy over in the office.
Jesse, stop right now, because I know where the next one goes to, and that's Al usually. So no.
Here's his schedule.
But, but Al, if you will work with Cherie, let's get that out this week, so we get a little bit of a head start on making that happen.
I will.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Justice Center and jail? That's it for me then.
You want to mention this weekend?
Oh, yes, I can. August 7th, 10:00 is the, I messed it up, so for the Masons, I'm sorry, but the Mason dedication ceremony of their plaque, their cornerstone on the building will be at the Justice Center at 10:00, and we're using the entrance off of 149. We will not be coming in the construction entrance off of the Sheriff's Road. We'll be using the road off of 149. It should be a good ceremony, and then I believe they have much planned after that.
Over at their facility.
At their facility.
It is open to the public.
It is open to the public.
Al, will the building itself be open?
No.
Okay. Just want to make that clear.
In case you didn't hear the question.
Nobody, nobody will be allowed in the building during this ceremony. Nobody.
Yes, sir.
We got flooring going down. Nobody.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will go to agenda item number eight, Grimes County Clerk Vanessa Brzezinski, discuss and take action to approve a software package for, for Commissioners Court meeting agendas, minutes, and video surfaces for the Commissioners Courtroom in the Grimes County Justice and Business Center. Vanessa?
Good morning. So we had our workshop on Monday, and we looked at several different companies, got to see some demos, got to hear a presentation. I have Stephen Lacks here with Granicus, he's back with us today in case you'll have any questions. So I do have a revised spreadsheet with some revised numbers.
Thank you.
And I will draw with this.
Thank you.
So Granicus has agreed to drop their 7% down to 5% for the annual percentage increase, and iCompass has reduced theirs from 5 to 4. I talked to iCompass yesterday. Then also, I've added at the bottom how much it would be for three years. Granicus made an offer where if we pay for three years upfront, they'll waive that annual percentage increase. And then we had the discussion on possibly using ARPA funds to pay for that. And one of the things, Judge, that you had asked was to get some information from other counties or municipalities, and I believe that information was forwarded to y'all via email yesterday. So I did print out one Texas municipality that was, that included the ARPA. So I didn't include any of the other, they had like CARES Act and things of that nature. So I didn't include any of the other, they had like CARES Act and things of that nature. But we're just looking at ARPA. So this is the company, that third-party company that they were telling us about called, and it's called Grants Office. And this is what it looks like when they did this for Harker Heights, which is in Val County. So it says ARPA, I mean, ARP, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal, and it says forthcoming. This is dated April 15th. But it gives you a description of, on page, the second page, actually, page three, B flat. It gives you an explanation of what that money can be used for. It says to respond to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease, and to respond to workers performing essential work for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such state or tribal government due to COVID public health emergency, and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband, broadband infrastructure. So it says eligibility, states, counties, municipalities, District of Columbia, tribal governments, and five U.S. territories. It also says government recipients are also permitted to transfer funds to private nonprofit organizations, public benefit corporations involved in transportation, special purpose units of local government, or multi-state transit agencies.
With all due respect, I mean, that language is no different than what we've already received.
Yeah, it is pretty big. It is pretty big. But again, that is a free service that they're willing to offer us to have this grant company look at grants available to Grimes County, including ARP and maybe others. As you can see, there was some other grants mentioned here under emergency preparedness and community development, and some foundations. So with that being said, we got a lot of information on Monday, and so again, we've got these three main companies that we're looking at, Granicus, Civic Clerk, and iCompass. And if you look at the numbers, the first year for Granicus is 19302. First year for Civic Clerk is 21635, and the first year for iCompass is 15,500. With taking in consideration the percentage, annual percentage increase, minus the one-time setup fees that each company charges, you're looking at year two of 13,280 for Granicus, 15,278 for Civic Clerk, and 14,500 for iCompass. So when you look at all of these, Granicus comes in the low bidder, if you want to call it that. Now, for three years, it would be $44,406. Now, he did say there is one option that we can add if we want, and that's the option for electronic voting for the commissioners. It's not required, because I can still do it on my side, but that would be an added expense. He said we'd add about $2,500 if we wanted to add electronic voting. That's per year.
Well, just for a review, the Munich Code and Swaggin', because they did not provide full services, one or the other.
Correct.
I know we were in a workshop, but collectively, I think we had kind of written both of those off.
Correct. And if you were to go with both of those companies, it would cost us $28,000 for the first year and $18,420 for the second year. And that's using two different companies, so having one stop shop, to me, is the best way to go.
Well, then it's also cheaper than those two companies.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir. As far as the training goes, they do offer virtual training.
They, who?
I'm sorry, Granicus. That was another question that you had asked yesterday, I mean, on Monday. They are willing to come out here if we feel like that after we do the online training that we need additional training, they will come out here, and I don't know what that cost would be. I don't, Stephen, can you tell me about the onsite training?
Yeah, so we would come out to do onsite training. If you guys would be willing to cover the travel expenses, we would come out and do it for free. So the rough cost would be about $2,000 for that, that'd be for two days of training.
And that would be for everyone, I mean, as far as, you know, the commissioners and the clerks and everything. I'm comfortable with the online training. But if we feel like we need additional training, that's something that y'all.
We wouldn't know that until after we do the online and feel like we're relaxed.
Correct, correct. Again, also with Granicus, they are offering that 60-day trial. So theoretically, we could start this month and have all of August and all of September to do a trial run. And then if we like it, then October 1, we won't pay till October 1, when our new budget starts. If we don't like it, no obligation. Am I correct?
So you, are you proposing, where do you propose getting the money to pay for this?
Good question. So when we did discuss ARPA funding, but we don't know 100% right now if that's really going to be available. We hope it will be, but again, if, if that is something that's not covered, then it's going to have to come from somewhere, right? So I talked with the auditors about using records management funds, and they said that was completely doable. It's part of records management is keeping track of the minutes, and that includes the video as well.
Sure.
And there is money in that fund to fund, they already completed the audit as requested by the end of July, and I've already signed off on it. And so there is funds available to pay for this if we want to go year by year instead of doing the three years upfront. The only advantage to doing the three years upfront is that they waive that yearly increase, which we can, you know, talk to auditors, because I told her that if I needed to cut back maybe on a project or two to get this done, then we could do that.
Jesse, when, correct, we've talked to so many budget lines and so many departments, I apologize. And Vanessa, did you submit anything in your proposed budget for this?
Not, well, yes, it's in her Fund 10. It was one of the prioritizing, it was listed on our prioritize list.
Right.
And so it's not currently in the budget.
It's not in the number.
It's coming out of Generals where she placed it. But 21, after we were reading, because we paid salaries out of Fund 21 for the records management and preservation.
Right.
And so in an A.G. opinion, it basically summarizes where the county clerk can determine if it is, what constitutes records management and preservation functions, but then court has to come in and agree with that. Because both of you have to agree on it. She just can't spend funds, she's unable to spend funds with that.
Okay, but one more time, clarity from my foggy mind, there was nothing submitted in the budget with the numbers that we're working with?
It was submitted, but we did not place it in.
We didn't, thank you, okay.
And there were no salaries coming out of Fund 10?
No.
Currently?
No, not anymore. That's been a couple of years that they have not been.
Okay.
What, what projects would you not?
So the project that I had planned for this coming year was the probate minute books. And so I had gotten two proposals. One was to do all the books, and then one was just to do like half of books. You know, kind of start small and work our way. So that's doable, and so, you know, we could just cut back on the number of books we'd get done. Just, and, you know, if y'all want to pay for three years out of that fund, I'm okay with that. There's, how much money is in there?
The audit version was $250,000, but then you've expended some of those funds this year.
Right, right.
But you've also have brought in revenue this year as well.
Right, but if we wanted to pay the 44,406 out of that.
There's 250, yeah, there's enough to pay for that.
I would just have to cut back on my project.
What do you have left in this year's money?
There was nothing, she didn't budget anything for this year. She has brought it to court for an amendment. So she hasn't, she doesn't have any left to spend, any budgeted funds to spend this year.
Right, because nothing was budgeted in that fund for this year. There is a fund balance, but nothing was in this year's budget.
You don't get to vote, but what's your recommendation?
Well, A, I'd like to use Granicus. I think they're a good choice, and I think that if we do the one year, it's going to be a perpetual expense. And obviously, if we do three years, then for three years, we're bound to pay for it, you know, from then on if we decide to keep it. My one question to Stephen was, if we do pay for three years, and after the first year, we're like, we don't, we don't want to use y'all anymore, what, what happens? And did we ever get an answer to that?
I'm still waiting to hear that from my side on that.
What's our attorney say?
About what?
Oh, if we pay it for three years upfront, and then after a year, we decide we don't, we don't want to use them anymore.
Should be missing in your contract.
I mean.
We had a contract?
We haven't got a contract yet. We're waiting on that. They're waiting on us, actually.
Should be spelled out in the contract.
Okay. So if, you know, if we don't want to take that risk, we can do the year-to-year and pay the 5% increase.
Well, it would be nice if we get clarification that the ARPA money will pay for it.
Yes.
It would make sense to me that we do the three-year to save the 5% increases and go ahead and be done with that. Plus, the ARPA money is still, we have to have it committed by the end of 2024, but it doesn't have to be paid out until by the end of 2026. So if we bought this, this would be '22, '03, and '04, then we could probably do another three-year contract of '05, '06, and '27, you know, paid out that way. So yes, it would be perpetual, but there's a real opportunity for us, I think, even for six years, if we stayed with this company or a company, that we could get it done with the ARPA money.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
Does that make sense, Commissioner, what I just said?
To, to understand this a little bit better about the grants, the other grants that are listed on here, are these just grants that this grant company found that would help Grimes County in this particular instance?
Well, this is not specific to Grimes County. This is specific to another entity.
Okay.
But this is just an example of what that grant company could do for Grimes County.
Okay.
And he has already, Stephen, you've already submitted that information to that grant company for us.
Okay, so this was Bay County's?
Yes.
Correct. So we, we don't have to have an answer today on this issue?
Not necessarily. I mean, there's no rush, you know, it's just trying to get things together before the budget.
Well, what I heard you say earlier was a timeline for training before.
Correct, yeah. We, if we can take advantage of that 60-day trial period, the sooner we can start training, the better, before we get into the new building. So we're fully trained and feel comfortable with it once we do start having meetings in the new courtroom.
Is it appropriate, I'm asking, I guess, our auditor and our county attorney, is it appropriate for us to make a decision today that we would go with one of the three top vendors subject to your agreement with the contract proposed? Because I would think either Granicus Civic or iCompass, any one of those three is going to have to have a little bit of time to put a contract together, us take a look. So, and that, if we have a recommendation and we have consensus among the court, I don't know that it's any benefit to have all three companies submit contracts, or is it?
I think we should just pick a company, go with that, and he's a contractor.
And you could take action today to pursue a contract with the one entity that you're talking about, but obviously, I wouldn't want you all to approve something as significant as this without seeing the actual contract, whether it's before or after I have a chance to try to negotiate it.
I agree.
Plus, there's still a question about funding, so, you know, would it be ARPA or would it be coming out of?
Yeah, but I want to, I want to walk that road as quick as we can on the funding, because.
We still need to budget it, but, you know.
Because I need to know if we're going to budget that money, or if Barbara's going to pay for that money, because fertilizer for our money tree has not come in, so.
Well, even if, even if it were a budget item for the upcoming budget, it would still, if it were coming out of her funds, Fund 10.
We'd be okay.
Yes.
No, if it's coming out of her Fund 10, you need to use revenues. If it's coming out of her Fund 21, those are restricted funds and it won't affect, so.
So would Fund 10 affect revenues?
Yes, you will be using the revenues that, from, out of the lawroom, from all of our newly budgeted revenues for fiscal year 2020.
So this isn't a dedicated fund?
Fund 21.
21 is.
21 is, and if you use Fund 21, that is a dedicated fund. That would not affect your revenue.
In order for us to use 21, then you would cut back on one of your, your projects.
And that's why I was.
And if you told Commissioner Cox, instead of doing the full.
I called it the wrong name.
Instead of you doing the full probate, you'd start and do a portion as a probate.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Jesse, I have a question. Let's do a hypothetical in that we are going to use ARPA funding. How would that work? Does do, because we've already received part of that money, right?
We have.
So would that be paid out of that directly, or would it be like a reimbursement type?
So a fund is set up for those ARPA, just like your Fund 21.
Right.
It's restricted. It's reserved for specific uses, specific purposes, and so we would cove that expense to that.
To that, okay.
To the ARPA.
Do you think, how soon do you think we could get an answer?
We are working, we just received our proposals. We're working on evaluating those.
Okay.
Once we do the evaluations, we'll bring it to court, and then they'll make a decision on who our grant administrator.
Oh, yeah, because y'all have.
And then we'd like to run that through our grant administrator. And hopefully, by then, there'll be some more, after this legislature conference, there'll be more information too that we received, and we'll have the ability to talk to other counties, speak with other counties too.
And not to hold up our budget, we could probably budget for projects with a certain amount, and that could be included with this or her other projects about preserved documents.
So you can budget in Fund 21, the amount and how it's being spent, it just determines on the ARPA funds, right? If, so you budget the amount, and if we're, have the ability to use the ARPA funds, then she has the ability to do more scanning projects out of Fund 21.
Right, right.
I'm glad we keep it simple. It makes it so much easier.
Are we kicking around the idea of going into negotiations or looking at a contract from a particular company today? Getting a contract, getting the company to prepare a contract and resubmit it?
I think what the county clerk is asking out of the three top contenders, us to say, we'd like to see a contract from one of these three, or get them to start preparing it, get it to the county attorney, so he can review it, do what he needs to do before we make a decision. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
So we're asking to start the negotiation process with Granicus, is what I'm understanding?
Yes. If that's the direction the court will like to go, that is my recommendation.
Well, price-wise, they're the most competitive. We've commented on some of their customer services, and we did mention that they were the only ones that did onsite presentation, so.
Yes. Do y'all have any other questions for Stephen?
There's a mouthful to put in a motion.
I'll make a motion that we ask Granicus to put together a contract for the review by our county attorney. And as soon as that's done, and the county attorney gives us a nod, we can then bring it back to court for approval. we can then bring it back to court for approval. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 8 by County Judge Joe Fowles, seconded by Commissioner Chad Mallett. Further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries, so.
Thank you.
Just, and you understand that, Mr. Lacks?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 9, that's also County Clerk Vanessa Brzezinski. Consider take action to auction or sell two plaque cabinets and three microfilm readers from county clerk's office.
So, um, we have these two plaque cabinets, um, that were replaced two years ago, that are sitting over in the, well, Roden Bridge cage over there, because I didn't have any other place to put it. And then, um, you know, we're talking about seeing what we need and don't need to take to the new building. I've been spending the last, since January, going through things, getting rid of things we can get rid of, deciding what we have to keep. And so, we have three microfilm readers that are not being used. We don't, nobody uses microfilm anymore, we have to keep it. So we are gonna keep the two microfilm printers, their readers slash printers, that we can use, but we're not gonna have microfilm machines available to the public, because now they're on the computer. So, you know, no need to take those with us. So I've got those three microfilm machines that I don't need to take and the two plaque cabinets. Now, I have reached out to other county clerks, um, and there was one county clerk that was interested in the plaque cabinets, um, but I was told by the auditors that I have to get them approved to be disposed of, you know, and if y'all wanna sell them, or auction them, or how, what do y'all wanna do?
Ma'am, as, these are not the same cabinets that Ms., these are plaque cabinets, not the ones Ms. Waters was asking for.
Right, and actually, Mary went and looked at those, um, yesterday, and she said those were not due for her.
Is that something Mr. Walker?
I'll take a look at them.
Okay. And, and I didn't include this on there, but I do also have, um, a, a plaque cabinet where you lay a plaque with drawers, again, I do have one of those, if you're interested in that one. Okay, okay, but these are the hanging ones that I'm, so, yeah.
All right, in any event, he's not interested, you still wanna move forward with getting rid of two or three micro?
Three microfilm readers, and, and one I don't think even works, um, and then those two plaque cabinets.
And Al, do you take care of that in the event that's the case?
Like, to be auctioned, right?
I'm not putting it on, I'm just asking.
Not normally, um, normally what I deal with is like office equipment.
Well, this is office equipment, specialized office equipment.
I, I can.
Thank you.
I don't mean to be spoiling this deal, but I mean, we got, Al's covered up.
I agree.
I don't think I wanna burden him with having to auction these off, I mean, that's just.
Well, who, who would be familiar to, to operate this or to handle this on behalf of the county?
Um, I mean, I think, I'll do it, I'll, I mean, I could do it, I mean, we got that auction site.
Uh, we, we used to.
They would, they would dispose.
We used to do it back when Mary, um, was, well, we had quit since building maintenance, I think that had our, had all been transferred under Mary to, to building maintenance. We haven't done it in a while.
But you'd like to get back into the arena?
Absolutely.
We don't wanna get back in the whole arena, if we need help with this particular item, then we can help with that.
Would, would you take charge of this, and then Mr. Peeler might give you some assistance, I feel?
We will work with Vanessa, and oh, yeah, because I mean, we've assisted Mr. Peeler for a while now, so.
Okay.
I'm hoping he'll return that favor.
Does that, does that help Commissioner Cox, maybe?
As long as Al doesn't have to do anything, that's great.
Okay.
Wait a minute, here's, what, what I was talking about. So this is what we'd be getting rid of, and like I said, I did reach out to some of the other counties.
You got an extra one of those?
Uh, you can have this one after. So you can see, these are the, and I had gotten an email from, uh, the county attorney about these as well. So these are the three microfilm readers, on the next page are the two printers that I'm keeping. We have one in my office and one over at the jail, I mean, not the jail, but the vault. And then the next page is the plaque cabinets, um, these are showing them with plaques in them, but now they're empty. So you can see, and then there's also a picture of my new plaque cabinets that replaced those other cabinets, they have doors with locks on them. And the last page, I didn't include, but I also, I was calling this, well, yeah, I'm gonna be getting rid of this microfilm cabinet, um, because I bought the microfilm cabinets as well with leftover money last year. So this will be going as well. And they all have asset tags on them, and I thought.
Do you need to amend this?
Um, if I, if I can, I would like to add this microfilm cabinet.
Can't you do that?
It's up to how comfortable you are, it doesn't hurt my feelings.
I accidentally left that off.
She left one off.
Can I ask a question?
That is a microfilm cabinet we're adding.
Can I ask?
Yes.
All right, so on your, which one are you getting rid of, which one you're not?
Okay, on the plaque cabinets, okay, no, I'm getting rid of these three, on top, okay?
Okay.
All right, I'm keeping these two.
That's okay.
I'm just showing you what I have and what I don't have.
Okay.
I'm getting rid of these two plaque cabinets here, that says old plaque cabinets, and this is what replaced them, this is my new ones, I might get.
Okay, I know, so that's what you're asking me to put up for auction?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And the last thing?
And, and this, and this one?
Yes, sir.
And where all these located?
Um, the microfilm cabinet and the three microfilm readers are in my office. Uh, the plaque cabinets are sitting over, um, behind the vault in that little cage area where the, where I keep the funds.
So are you gonna take over the auction now? I, I just get the pictures, so I, I know.
What you were asking is if you were gonna do it.
I did, I, I'm assisting the auditor, so I was getting the pictures, so I don't have to run out to, for the auditors to take the pictures, I have them.
Yeah.
And I go, here's what you need to do.
He's assisting, he's assisting.
Yeah, I got you, see teamwork.
You have a.
Balance works out.
Okay.
And if, you know, and if we wanted to sell them, I wouldn't even have a clue for what these were.
That's probably fifty, sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment there.
Well, I did find an invoice from the day we passed, get purchased one of these plaque cabinets, and it was like three thousand dollars.
Yeah, but they're, they're antiques and collectibles now, so they've gone up.
A little paint on a bookshelf.
Does anybody wanna tackle a motion on this?
Uh, let me see, I'd like to make the motion.
I'm sorry, that money will just go back into general, correct?
Work for me.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to auction or sell two plaque cabinets, three microfilm readers, and one microfilm cabinet from the county clerk's office, with the money going back into the general fund.
Commissioner, could I ask you to make one slight change to that, just auction, not sell?
Just auction?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that's after Mr. Walker had an opportunity to inspect and see if he wants to keep the grant?
Okay. After Mr. Walker inspects them, and makes a decision.
Joe, you want that part of the motion?
Is there a second?
Second motion.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 9 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, is there further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Agenda Item Number 10 has already been covered, will now go to Roden Bridge engineer, Mr. Harry Walker, Agenda Item Number 11, consideration of possible approval of the plat, uh, estates of Grimes County subdivision, including a request for variance to the lot dimension ratio, attachment number 11. Is that gonna be confusing, but can run out of addition?
We only rule out things, so if it matches something that's already there, we get shut down. Al, this is a small subdivision, ARPA, we appreciate the fee, we're committed to track. It is a variance request, we're all of this, because these lots do not meet the county's width-to-depth ratio. Criteria is the lot depth shouldn't be more than about two and a half times. And if they're lost, if you look at these, these are closer to eight times the width. So the applicant has questioned that we, Mr. Court waived that requirement. The, that's strictly up to you. The general concept of the depth ratios, and you can sort of see the potential here, your lots are this long and deep, there's a temptation for people to come in and build a second house or a third house behind the front, which is fine when it's the mother-in-law's house or grandma's house, whatever, but sometime in the future, they're gonna wanna sell that to somebody that's not a family member, and that, then the access becomes problematic. Whereas if you have a more conventionally safe lot, there's not as much opportunity to do that. We have approved a number of these variance requests in the past, there's certainly precedence for it. I don't recall one that has been quite this severe as far as the, the depth relative to the width of the lots. So, you know, y'all need to, to make a decision on that variance request, and then depending on whether that's, um, approved or not, and vote on the approval of the, the overall plan.
Is this Commissioner Dobianski, or Commissioner Cox, is yours?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts?
I'm kinda hesitant to, to do that with, for the reason he just said, building another house behind that. Then you have issues with right away to get in there to it, you know, when you, when you divide those. I believe that's part of the reason we kinda have a ratio issue as well.
Right, and there, there's a purpose for it, and I've certainly seen situations where, you know, it has been abused, you know, and it, it does become problematic. Typically, it's fine when all the houses are owned by family members.
Right.
But then when, you know, something, you go to sell to an outside party, then how do you provide access around the house and across to get to one in the back, and that creates issues, so.
So is there a solution, I mean?
They would have to go back and relook at how they wanted to subdivide the property. Quite frankly, with, with the configuration of this property, I don't think they're gonna get this many lots without going in and, you know, building a road, provide access in there, and then they'll lose some acres in that, so. They, we have a few of our criteria, the true length of lots, but, um, if they need to figure, they may well not get, uh, they hang lots out of it.
Do they give any indication what they might be putting on this lot?
No. And we don't, I mean, within, the residential lots within that definition can be a simple house, it can be a trailer, if you don't have, if you don't have such fire, they're gonna be residential.
His previous variance, I'm, I'm sure were probably a lot closer to the.
Typically, yes.
That's eight to one, on the width to the length, that's, that's pretty significant on two acres.
That's stretching it.
Pretty skinny.
It is. Stretching it.
Mr. County Attorney, do you have any concern?
Uh, I would tell you that you put in place your rules, in, in theory, whether it was you or whether it was a court before you, and anytime there's a request for a variance, you're being asked to go outside of your rules, and it ought to make sense, and if there are concerns about it, um, there's no requirement that you grant variance. But some people like bowling, and maybe they wanna have a bowling alley.
And a tennis court.
So, so these are approximately, if I'm reading correctly, about anywhere from 110 to 113 by eight hundred and twelve feet long?
They're long and.
Do we have anything else in the county like this?
Oh, yeah.
We do.
We do.
Almost every configuration of lot you could imagine, we've got somewhere in the county, people come up with very creative ideas.
And want, keep in mind, of course, they're, they're gonna have to figure out, uh, septic, they're gonna have to figure out water, they're gonna have to figure out power, they're gonna figure out all those things within the confines of that space, and then the neighbors are gonna have to do the same. But that's all a question of, do you leave that to the market, or do you have some oversight of that? What oftentimes, of course, happens is you have folks buy some of these, put some together, and then you may be left with one that is the least attractive, but that's a market decision for the subdivision, and not necessarily for you. You have to decide, when is it right for the government to step in?
Well, if they put subdivision rules into the contract, you know, 'cause I've seen where you don't build anything fifty foot close to the property line, so if you put that on the left and the right, then they could build on the eleven foot that's left in the middle.
Our, our setbacks aren't quite that severe, but ten feet on either side. Yeah, it, it, we have a, we actually have a situation just down the road, the same sort of issue has become problematic. Three pallets stacked, you know, like this, with an access even on the base of the property, well, the property is sold, and he doesn't want to, now, they didn't have, like, the base on the access even, and he doesn't want to acknowledge it, so we've got these three lots, and how do they get access out to the road, the ones in the back? It's a real world problem.
Creates people being man locked.
Yeah.
It could create a situation where people would be like, oh, yeah.
And that, and that was probably put in before we had our subdivision regulations.
It was, I, you know, I mean, there were many things from the old days that before we had rules that don't meet our current rules, um, you know, we try not to create new situations.
Well, this seems like we'd be creating a new situation for complaints in the future, yeah.
Seems what it seems.
I, my recommendation is not to, uh, grant the variance.
Okay. Your recommendation is not?
Do we need to just, well, reject the plat, or disprove the plat?
If, if you don't approve the variance, you can't approve the plat.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion?
No. Well, I would call for a motion, and if we don't get a second, or if you're gonna make a motion.
Well, but it's a plat, but submit a plat, we're gonna have to.
Yes or no, otherwise they automatically, okay. Give it a shot, Commissioner.
Okay, because we don't, I recommend that we don't approve the variance. I move that we do not approve the plat of estates of Grimes County subdivision.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 11 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett, is there further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 12, consideration of possible action on the abandonment of portions of North 4th Street, Waller Avenue, and portions of the alley, but, alleyway between Waller and Norvell in Block 25 and 26 of the Stonem Platte, Volume 54, page 94, R P R G C, our attachment number 12.
This is another step in preparing the Stonem Platte property to sale. One of the issues, one of the questions regarding this property, the town of Stonem, had a street alley that's laid out, that's where they were developed. had a street and alley that laid out, which were never developed, and which have not been honored, so to speak, by the owners. Just out of a element of caution, before we go to sell this property, I recommend that we abandon the portions of those streets and alleys to the county-owned property, so that there's no question of the future usage of it. One aspect I need to point out, if we abandon the streets and alleys, the portion of Waller Avenue on the west side there goes half and half to the adjacent property owners, so there would be a portion of that property would revert to the adjacent property owner, to the whales. And that's standard within the abandonment, we do go to the adjacent property owner. It will reduce the overall acreage that we have to sell. But I think it's the proper thing to do, to make sure we're complying with the rules, and where there are not any issues in selling this property.
And the North Street would then be included into the...
North Street and the east half of Waller, and those pieces of the alley in there would all just become a portion of the adjacent property, it would no longer be private property.
Just out of curiosity, who vacate these? Who notifies the property owner adjacent?
I've already talked to them, they know it. Fortunately, to make it simple, there's only one property on the west side.
There's only one? So Lot 24 and Lot 13, just one, that whole Block 5 is one owner?
Yes.
And we, have we done all the notifications and posted that out there?
We did.
Okay, so all that's been taken care of.
It happens to be the family that originally granted the property to the county. So if there's a concern about shorting the county acreage on the road or whatnot, these are the folks that gave the county the property. I don't know if it was a cost to the county at the time or not.
Commissioner Dobieinsky, again, we're in good geography.
If there's no further questions or comments, I move that we take action to abandon the portions of North Fourth Street, Waller Avenue, and portions of the alleyway between Waller and Norvell, and Block 25 and 26 of the Stonem Platte, volume 54, page 94, RPRGC.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12 by Commissioner Dobieinsky, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries. Mr. Walker, you have number 13, consideration of possible approval for the abandonment of a portion of CR 208, and accepting the dedication of right-of-way for a cul-de-sac at the same location, precinct two, see attachment 13.
This is also a road abandonment. This particular section of County Road 208 is the very far end of the road, about 500 feet of road that's very good end. There are two property owners. The situation is that the 500-foot or so section that they're requesting us to abandon goes up to the gate into the still much property. But along the side of that property, along the 500 feet up to the Y that shows in that exhibit, is also along the same property owner, and there's a small pond there that kind of looks like a park, and they have probably some people coming in there and picnicking and doing things they shouldn't do. It's kind of come to this form, so they've asked that we abandon that. The road doesn't go through, this is a dead end. If you look at the exhibit, the left-hand portion of the Y, the extension there, the mixed street road, is a private road, so this is the Y comes to the end of County Road 208 if you approve of this. I will say, a standard cul-de-sac was proposed, 60-foot diameter, 60-foot radius cul-de-sac. The property owners have asked if we could do something a little more creative that potentially would impact some very large boundaries and things they don't want to do. So I said, I would make it, make it work out, an acceptable situation for a turnaround. So what I would ask, if you're willing to do the vacation of the roads, that would make it subject to a receipt of dedication of an acceptable cul-de-sac at that location. Rather than doing just our cul-de-sac, Harry, are they going to have Dick Bond's doing the maintenance at that end? Once we work something out, but they'll do the maintenance.
I am familiar with this portion of that road, and I've received complaints about people coming onto that property, and it is private property. I think that may have been put in years ago for, probably for a bus route or something to turn around down there. So I agree with the abandonment request.
And if approved, as I recommended, it would not become final until the dedication of that turnaround, approved by court.
With us approving this, based on your comment, do you know if there's a bus that still turns around down there?
I don't think so. I know a bus goes down that road, but I have no idea where they turn around down there.
Doubt it.
Yeah. I don't think they go that far back in there right now. But eventually, that's probably the reason they want to put that cul-de-sac in there, because there may be in the future, you know.
We recommend that we do, whenever we have a dead-end road, create a better situation for, whether it's a bus or delivery vehicle, or just passenger vehicles, turn around without having to pull up into somebody's driveway and do those kind of things. We're giving them something, we're asking for something in return to improve this overall situation.
Well, again, my precinct two.
If there aren't any further comments or questions, I move that we approve the abandonment of the portion of 208 indicated in the attachment, and accept the dedication of right-of-way for a cul-de-sac in the same location.
Second.
Just for clarity for the minute, that's on the condition that we reach an agreement on acceptable dedication, right?
Yes.
I was actually talking to the minute taker.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12 by, I'm sorry, agenda item number 13 by Commissioner Dobieinsky, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Roden Bridge report.
Happy to report, we finally got some paving done. We completed County Road 202 and the roads in the Paul Pine neighborhood. First course only, the roads we've done represent maybe a third of our total for the year of first course only. So we are far behind because of the weather. We hoping to have another big push next week. We may get some more done this week, but...
Process-wise, do you put second coat on what you've done before you go put first coat elsewhere, or typically what do you do?
We'll get first coat on everything before we start doing second course.
Gotcha.
There's a time period in there that we need to wait and let that first course cure.
Okay.
So it lets itself go ahead and get all first course, and then we'll come back. We, once we get the first course down, the road is pretty well protected. We had a situation last year where County Road 194, we were only able to get the first course on before the winter, weather shut us down, and it helped us pretty well until the trees. That's a whole different story, but first course alone is durable for relatively short period of time, so once we get first course on everything, then those roads are pretty good, and we live in the season with the weather. I'm comfortable that they'll hold up for the next year.
Thank you.
Right now, we're continuing with South Fork and Roden Mill, County Road 192, breezy wind, and we've got some small cul-de-sacs and things packed up slightly. I have those roads are being prepped now. I do, if the weather map will cooperate a little bit, I do think we'll at least get first course on everything. I'm not at all certain we'll get some second course on everything before the end of the budget year. Hopefully, we'll have another month beyond that, although we can still get paving, so the wet weather in spring or December is going to be worse. Elsewhere, the first round of mowing has been completed. We'll bring, we'll go back in September, do another round. We've got U. P. Banks is working on 2016, and Hurricane Harvey grants, he's made pretty good progress on those projects. And we've got, we're continuing to do inspections on the Uravoyne subdivision out here at Highway 30, and they've been held up by weather as well. And I've got, I think, four new plating proposals on my desk to look at, so thank you for starting the help.
Were you able to hire any temporary help at that $10 an hour that we...
We got one.
You got one?
He's been a very good addition. It's a young guy, he's 18. Exactly.
But age has nothing to do with it.
Age has nothing to do with it, but he's capable. The first week he started, we had him out there with a role in helping with the paving operation. He's run tractors, he's run tractors, all that kind of stuff, exactly what we're looking for.
Good.
He just doesn't have any grandchildren.
Four sisters.
Four sisters. Four sisters.
Is he final staying, or what's his plan?
He is hoping that if he works for the county for a while, that an opening will come up and get on permanent position, and based on what I've seen so far, if that situation occurred.
Advance?
I just want to say, I've received several compliments on the paving that y'all have done thus far.
Thank you, sir. Well, now go to agenda item number 14, discuss and take action to accept Grimes County Historical Commission Chairman Al Peeler's resignation, and appoint Mary Ann Waters as Grimes County Historical Commission Chairman to complete the current term. Commissioners, so that you are aware, there's a process according to the bylaws of the Historical Commission. Mr. Peeler, because of his work schedule and personal schedule, felt that he needed to relinquish chairmanship of the Grimes County Historical Commission. The nominating committee from the Grimes County Historical Commission has presented the name of Mary Ann Waters to me with their, with the nominations committee approval. I put that name before you, and then it will be presented to the Grimes County Historical Commission at their next meeting, which would be Monday, and they would make that final and official.
Mr. Folds, other than what we just said, do we need to do anything in your opinion, or do we need a motion to accept Mr. Peeler's?
Well, you might want to scrutinize the character and how good of chairman this person might be, but...
Careful if you ever need a license plate.
But no, you don't have to do any more than you've already done.
Can I make the motion that we accept Grimes County Historical Commission Chairman Al Peeler's resignation, and appoint Mary Ann Waters as Grimes County Historical Commission Chairman to complete the current term?
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 14 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. So be it.
Agenda item number 15, discuss and take action to reappoint Pastor Charles Tompkins as a member of the BV COG Brazos Valley Council of Governments Board of Directors with the term beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2024. I was notified by the COG that his term would be expiring. I have talked to Pastor Tompkins to see if he would be willing to serve again, and he said he would, and his work schedule is going to allow him to participate more often than not at the BV COG. So I'll make a motion that we reappoint Pastor Charles Tompkins as a member of the BV COG with the start of October 11, 2021, and ending September 30 of 2024. Second.
No, I was going to ask the question, but I won't.
You'll get to in just a moment. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 15 by County Judge Jopout, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Is there discussion? Commissioner Walker.
No, I was just going to ask, in keeping with our terms of us serving two years, does that stay the same, or...
I believe Commissioner Cox has one more year left on his term. I also checked on that.
No, I'm saying even with the general public.
All right, would you start over? I don't understand your question.
Okay, we, the court serves two years. I'm just wondering, this is a three-year appointment, so I was just wondering. Three is fine with me, I'm just asking, are we keeping it the same as the court's appointments?
I really can't answer that question, other than this is what the COG submitted to me, and therefore I submitted it to the court.
He's not, he's not a city official or a county official, so I don't think that applies to those individuals that serve on there. The elected officials, I believe most of them are two-year terms, right?
I believe that's correct.
And I know we agreed to hold ours to two-year terms.
And the reason I checked on Commissioner Cox, because this was three, and I thought we all run under a two-year term.
Yeah. And Charles has been on there for, he's been on there for a good while, he's been on there.
However, because of his job and health issues within his family, he wasn't able to participate as much this last term as he desired. That's why I asked him before, submitted his name before you today.
Okay.
If there's no additional discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries. Agenda item number 16, presentation of a proclamation regarding the promotion of Lance Simmons with Tex Dot. I invited Mr. Simmons to be with us today, he could not, so I invited him to be with us at the next commissioner's court, and his schedule would not permit, and he's on his way out of Grimes County and our area, the Brazos Division, going to Austin. So I'll read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas Lance Simmons received his bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Texas A&amp;M, and whereas he has used his degree for the last 28 years at Tex Dot, and whereas he has held the positions of summer engineer technician, engineer assistant, transportation engineer, transportation engineer supervisor, director of operations, and district engineer, and whereas he has served in both the Atlanta District and finally the Bryan District, and whereas he has served as district engineer of the Bryan District for the last six years, and whereas he has been promoted to director of engineering and safety operations for Tex Dot based in Austin, Texas. Now therefore, we as the commissioners' court of Grimes County do hereby congratulate Lance Simmons on his promotion and advanced career opportunity. We look forward to his continued success..." We look forward to his continued success and service to Grimes County along with the other 253 counties in this great state of Texas. Sign County Judge Joe Faugh." And with the court's permission, I'd like to present this to Mr. Simmons before he gets out of town.
All right, thank you. What a great promotion.
It is. It's going to be a big loss for us, but it'll be a big gain for the state of Texas. I know he will do well. And I'm not sure, but I think Chad Boni might be taking, because Chad got the director position over in Beaumont just recently, but I think they might bring him back home to the Bryan District. I don't know. And if I'm telling secrets to the world, I don't know what I'm talking about. Nothing's efficient. Forgive me if I'm out of line on that.
So Chad's not there anymore?
No, Chad went to Beaumont.
I didn't know that.
Yes, he went to Beaumont as the executive director or the director of that district. And in my conversation with Mr. Simmons, he said that Chad was a candidate to come back to Bryan. So that may or may not happen, but it would be nice because he already knows our territory. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number 17, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge's signatory. I think everything's fairly green, although I do know that we had a grass fire that one of the VFDs was called out on. So things are still burnable, but I see no action and haven't had any calls from chiefs asking us to implement the burn ban.
Drive quick, Jim.
It is drying quick. Well, maybe we can get the hay up off the ground and pray for rain starting tomorrow. So we'll take no action. Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go, it doesn't want to rain.
I understand. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 18, receive any updates on the strategic plan?
I don't have any updates, but I would like to say welcome to Melissa Bochek, if I said it right, who is our new intergy. Give me the title.
Customer Service Manager in Lea.
Okay, for Grimes County, if you all have not met her. Glad to have you.
Good to have you here, thank you. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 19, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 19 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Further discussion? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned.